Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting of the Brown and Boylston Regional School Committee Budget Facilities and Safety Subcommittee to order. Okay, so today, Al, I don't know how you want to do if you want Aaron to present. We have the budget closeout and the budget scheduled. Aaron will be presenting. And then as part of a piece that's going to be included in the budget for FY '27 will be a new math curriculum. So we have folks here to speak to that. So do you want to have them? Aaron first?
Yep, excuse me, sorry. We're gonna have Aaron present first.
Okay.
And then we'll have a presentation about possibly presenting a new math curriculum for the following school year as well too.
Okay, perfect. So obviously now I know Aaron. Do you, Renee, do you know Joey? You both know Joey? All right. Just wanted to make sure. All right. Okay, perfect.
Excellent.
All right, let's get rolling.
Thank you. All righty. So I have three handouts up front I shared with you all. I think the first thing I'd like to do is I'm gonna take them in order. We'll talk a little bit about fiscal '26 and where we landed at the end of the year. The front page combines sort of the central office as well as sort of the overall of the district. Each of the additional stapled two-page items is a line item budget report for each school individually. I'm not gonna go through every line item in each school. You will see all three schools came out with a positive budget variance for the most part, which is good. Overall, the district, some of the things I mentioned all year, so things like the two superintendents for six months, sort of weighed on some things in the central office. We also had an overlap in our tech director. And you can also see legal services were pretty elevated. There are some other items you'll notice the note at the bottom of the front page. There are some negative line item variances at the schools. Most of those are very specifically due to there were budgeted funds intended to go to Circuit Breaker, I'm sorry, School Choice that weren't necessary to meet the overall budget. So School Choice is sort of our big rainy day savings account. And I'd rather preserve that rather than save spending elsewhere. That's the money we sort of were able to keep in a savings account for all time for rainy days. And we also use it to help offset the budget. So anytime you see me talking about School Choice, that's typically referenced as a maximum amount. That's an aid to help balance the budget, but if we don't use it, we won't to keep that in our savings account, just like you would do at home, right? You may have a savings account, you dip into it when you need to, but if you don't need it, you don't necessarily use it. So you try to work from sort of your operating, your paycheck, whatever have you. Part of balancing the budget is also our district relies, and every district relies on Circuit Breaker and some grant funding. So down at the bottom of the front page, you'll see money we've spent on Circuit Breaker, the IDEA grant, and the Title I grant. IDEA is a special education grant. Largely that was used to pay for some paraprofessionals spread out throughout the schools. We funded those. Circuit Breaker, IDEA, and Title I are all spread equitably among the schools. So as we plan the budgets and we spend the money, we spend that money as equitably as possible across the schools as per the regional agreement. So all in, when you add everything up, we came $184,760 under budget. We did not necessitate the use of Circuit Breaker, School Choice this year, I'm sorry, I always mix those two terms up for some reason. School Choice this year, which means that that money stays in our savings account, which is helpful, will help with the '27-'26 budget as well as the '27 budget. A couple reasons are outlined in the memo I shared. Our Circuit Breaker reimbursement actually came in a bit higher than expected. So Circuit Breaker is based on the amount of money you spent on high-cost special education students. And then the state reimburses that at a percentage rate. A few years ago, they started factoring in transportation costs. They didn't use to factor in transportation costs. They were reimbursing that at a 50% rate. They've started reimbursing that at a 75% rate. So we received more transportation reimbursement under Circuit Breaker. Additionally, the overall rate was a little bit higher, and last year we didn't spend through for '24. The district did not spend through all of its Circuit Breaker, so we had an opportunity to roll a little bit of money over. So that helped us out a little bit in meeting the overall budget and allowed us to keep money in our School Choice account. If you look at the memo, what I just talked about is in the first part of the memo. The one thing that we do need to do for our auditor is you all in December have approved an overall budget. But as things sort of fell out and we were able to work out exactly what we were going to be able to spend on Circuit Breaker, once we were able to close our fiscal '24 numbers and some other items, what we do need to do for our auditor is just provide a line item budget detailing where the money we're going to spend is coming from. And that is in the sort of table you'll see there at the bottom of the first page. You will see that the budget that you approved in '24 in December, a total of $24,793,688, would have depended on $182,715.15 of School Choice money. But because we came below budget by $184,000 overall, we won't need to spend that money and that will stay in our savings account. But for budget purposes, I understand we're doing this a little bit backwards because of the way things played out. If you'll recall, when we presented our budget this year, all of these items were part of the approval the school committee made for the fiscal '26 budget. Unfortunately, you know, sort of based on the way things fell, we are doing things a little bit in reverse. We're asking you to just approve the line items in reverse because we're having to play a little bit of catch-up, not knowing where things were gonna fall out with the end of fiscal '24.
Wait, 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 can we stop there? So I'm confused. So we have to vote on the October 14th meeting for the auditors for the prior year budget? Because I understand we voted on the one number, the $24 million. And so what, do we have to vote on it at this level of detail?
No, no, this level. Right. And I'm not asking...
No, because we didn't...
I'm not, yes, I'm not asking you to...
Because we didn't break it down by the...
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
All right. We just did the totals, so you...
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
I get it now. Are you guys clear on that? That's confusing.
I apologize. I'm jumping from one to the next.
It's not you, it's just because we did, so we voted on whatever. So we have to call out the Chapter 70. We have to call out what is 71 as transportation. That had to be called out separately in the vote. We usually vote that. In December, when he came on board, he, we didn't have a budget. He had a total. He wanted to work backwards and clean up the books. He did that.
We were just trying to keep the district out of a 1/12 budget.
Yes.
At that time, and Desi was breathing down her neck, and we needed to get our hands around things. So we're doing things a little bit in reverse. We knew we were gonna be able to meet that number. It was really just a matter of how we're gonna meet that number.
So at the next school committee meeting, we're gonna add on the agenda that you're gonna be voting on this right here. That's why it's marked "draft."
So this is a draft. I didn't want anyone to be confused that you were voting on this today. I'm not looking, this committee doesn't vote on this, but I just wanted to get feedback, make sure you're comfortable with this going to the full committee and that this is sort of the vote we'll take.
But and ask us the questions now. So we're prepared for one in full school committee if this question need to be asked. So if you're not understanding it, let us know so we can make sure that everyone understands this well. Purpose of the subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you, Megan. I'm just rambling on and probably not...
No, so like, I think the term, when you said line item, I immediately am thinking that we have to vote on it at this level of detail. So I don't, I might change that terminology.
Okay.
I get what you're saying because I remember previous years where we had the votes, the assessments had to be broken down by the Chapter 70, the Chapter 71, the Circuit Breaker, the grants.
Yeah.
And we never actually did that. So I get what you're saying as far as how the detail for these numbers.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, I trust you, but it would be nice if there was like, is that, so if we, I get how we can go back and recount the assessments.
Mm-hmm, yep. Yeah, those are the few that...
This budget would tie, if we add up all of these?
Yes.
That'll tie our $24,793,688?
Um, yes. So if you're, if you're looking at, if you take, it should be $24,793,688. Oops. I have a single typo somewhere. I apologize.
Yeah, $3,000.
It should be $796,888. There's three somewhere. I apologize. I will fix that.
$3,000 missing.
But, and again, the reason we're here. But I can fix that and I can change the phrasing on line item budget. I'm not sure what term I'll use, but I'll try to make it a little different.
Detailed budget or...
Detail, okay.
I think, it's not really the detail, it's the assessment breakdown.
Okay.
And we had a hard time to, like, the public had a hard time understanding the difference between budget and assessments.
Sure.
That's essentially what this is here, is it's like a reconciliation of showing how our spend, what revenue makes up our spend.
Right. Right. And that's hard. So this is kind of, this is sort of the revenue budget. This is where we're getting the money.
The revenue budget, there you go.
This is where we're getting the money from. This is where we're spending the money. So the memo's showing where's the money coming from, because we have to have the money to be able to spend the money. So in order to, in order to do that, we're just showing that we have the money. And that's something we've done in advance in the past, and we should be doing in advance, but we're having to do it on the back end now because of the way things happen.
So let Aaron go back and just make that correction of the numbers, right? Make sure that...
Yeah, that's why we're here.
And then you guys will be voting on this. Not that you're not privileged to this, and everyone's not privileged to this, right? This information right here, but we'll be voting on the large, the numbers, right? The main line items, right? Line items or whatever we wanna call them, but those main numbers in terms of operating assessment, Chapter 70, transportation, those will be the large line items that you'll be voting on.
I suspect I just hit a three instead of a zero when I was typing in the memo. It's hand typed, whereas all of the items on spreadsheet are calculated possibly, so...
That's what I was gonna ask, is if this is calculated.
Yeah. So Excel's calculating the main, the spreadsheets for me, this one. I'll double-check all the numbers though, just in case something happens.
Your numbers tie here. At least this makes sense to me. All right, I'm gonna stop talking. Do you guys get this?
Okay. Does that make sense so that if we get to a school committee, you feel comfortable with it? Okay.
Beth, you good?
Yes.
You're good. Lisa, you good?
And if anyone has individual issues, questions as you go through this, please feel free to reach out. I've sat down with people and gone through everything one-on-one sometimes in the past to help them get a sense of it. You know, I guess follow the communication channels, but other than that, I'm really happy to sit down one-on-one with people if necessary.
And again, we wanna put this on the agenda for the October 14th meeting so we can get this passed and moving on as we start to get ready for the '26-'27 budget, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it looks like the way this is written, we have about $185,000 out that is going to E&amp;D?
Yes.
And do we vote?
So, yeah, I mean, that automatically would go into sort of, sort of E&amp;D with or without a vote.
Right, okay.
Yeah, that doesn't, we're beginning to work on our E&amp;D calculation, so end of year report. And E&amp;D sort of overlapped a little bit. We're getting a little support just with E&amp;D this year because of just all of the timing issues, but that'll be it. So I know, you know, you may remember, we had a lot of support on end of year report and E&amp;D last year because we were so pressed for time. This year, we're gonna get a little bit of additional support on just the E&amp;D calculation so that we can get end of year report done and budget done. That will work within budget, that was planned for.
I just have one last question. So this is really good. I, this is, I think, I understand this and I like the layout, and I really like how you've done these. I think this is really good.
Sure, that's sort of my standard.
Yeah, so that's great. I think this is awesome. We've never really had anything like this before, so this is really helpful. I think in my opinion, I don't know what anyone else thinks, but I like to be able to look and see where we overspent and where we didn't spend what we thought. I think that's helpful in doing the budget for next year. One thing that I have been asking for for years, not saying that I've been asking you, I don't think I've ever asked you for, is it would be really helpful to have, and I'm not saying now, probably like during budget season, like in the winter, it would be helpful to have some type of School Choice analysis. Like you talked a lot about School Choice and how we had budgeted to use some of the School Choice money, and we didn't use any of it, so it's staying in our savings account. And I know in the past, we've had School Choice broken down by school, and then we found out that's kind of not the right way to do it. So it would be really helpful to kind of see, just like an analysis of what we have in School Choice, you know, what are some of the things we can do with School Choice? And I know the auditors kind of touch on it when they come to present, and I remember they said, you know, our School Choice balance is kind of high. And now it sounds like we're putting more money back into it. So it would be interesting to kind of like, maybe we should touch upon that and is there something we can do where we have so many needs in the district?
Yeah.
You know, especially capital needs? Is there something that we can maybe do with that money that we need?
I would like to get the fiscal '24 audit done, right? Just so I feel comfortable about where things are. That's gonna be kind of my line in the sand because I'm sort of inheriting things. I wanna know what the auditor says. This is what you have, we're confirming this. Then obviously, because we have, we've received some money this year, we haven't spent money, that will be added to that in '25. And then I think we should have meaningful conversations about what the purpose of that money is, when we should consider spending some of that money. Additionally, we'll have E&amp;D certified. I think our E&amp;D balance is going to be relatively healthy. So that might be an opportunity to talk about if we spend it all this year, we won't have it next year. So I'd like to think about how we responsibly spend that money. And the same thing, how do we look at our savings account and rather than just desperately spend it, we have an investment strategy for it.
Yeah.
So if we're going to use it for capital needs, we're use, that's a reasonable use, and that's investing in the future of the school district. You know, I never wanna just be planning one year out. I wanna be planning for our future, right? So I don't wanna think about wiping out your savings account in three years. I want that to last and grow even, right? And have you, have the district have the opportunity to meet maybe some very robust challenges in the future, whether it's parking or what happened.
Right, that's me, yeah.
We just don't know, right? We don't really have, every year we don't put money into, you know, our capital savings. We don't, right? So we've experienced, right? An elevator went in the previous district, went in that we weren't prepared for, no budget for, and all of a sudden that just went. And we had to come up with the money for that and had to go back to the towns for that as well too. So it's good to have some savings, right?
Yeah.
So it's certainly a conversation that we have, we've known with you, but obviously the full school committee, like, what do we wanna do with this? And, you know, how do we wanna plan ahead for the unexpected? Like, we all have our own savings, to Aaron's point.
Yeah, and it would be interesting to find, and the auditors touched upon this last time they came in, which was the January before you were here. They didn't come last year because they didn't fit, yes.
They did. They were there last year too.
Did they come? All right. I remember them giving a presentation two years ago, and they talked about how our School Choice balance is higher than average, right? That's a great way to describe, higher than average, lower than average. And if things are higher than average, and we're saying, you know, for example, at Tohoto, we need equipment for the auditorium, and we need furniture, and we need computers. Maybe can we, as a school committee, say, okay, we have a higher-than-average balance, I completely agree we wanna save, but maybe can we use some of that for some capital things, specifically at Tohoto? Because I feel like that school keeps getting pushed off and pushed off and pushed off. So I think that would be a good conversation to have maybe this winter before this budget season.
I think it's a fantastic conversation. Yeah, we are still waiting for our audit report, so we obviously closed fiscal '24 very late. That was challenge one. Challenge two is, our particular auditor is way behind. I know this...
So they haven't come and given the final report. You're right, they just mean that the last time they came to give a final report was almost two years. It was, it would be two years in January, yes.
And whether they come or not, I always share it with the committee myself anyhow. So you'll get, you know, typically you'll get the full audit report. If there's findings, there's findings, we'll address those. Usually we get a management letter. Some people share a management letter, some people don't. I always share it, and I usually put together like a game plan. What are we doing to address these items? Occasionally, a management letter item will be something that there's not much we can do about, and we might say, well, we're just gonna keep doing it. If it's minor, we'll have those conversations. If there are more management letter items or more suggestions, like this might be, you know, but this is the way we have to do it for now. It's just the reality.
Anyone have any more? I don't want to go over the budget timeline for you guys only because I know a bunch of the time for all of us tonight. We got another meeting right after this, and I have all the work...
No, I love this. This is awesome. Thank you so much.
Very well.
Sorry, I like the monochromes.
Yep. So the last document is a budget timeline. I typically do this by month. So budget process starts in July, so we're, you know, a healthy two, three months into the budget process. We make sure we get all prior year's books pretty well closed. And as you know, we did capital walks of the buildings this year with town officials with school committee. We will continue to do that. We'll schedule them as we get this in. I won't go through every line item, but I'll get us up to present. So I have provided the capital planning document to school committee. Salary sheets have been provided to administrators. John has taken a look and provided me feedback on his salary sheets. So I am in the process of incorporating those into the full budget document. From there, I will share out the full budget documents with the administrators for them to provide feedback. That's, we'd be using fiscal '26 numbers, and they would be providing me feedback mostly on what they might move around, what they might recommend to increase, decrease. Sometimes in different programs, there are varying needs. So John always does an analysis of capital at the, not capital curriculum, at the elementary level. So he last year provided me sort of detailed analysis, and I went and made changes to that. If those aren't big changes, I'm comfortable making those. Once people have, say, large asks, that's where Al and I would sit down with that principal, talk through what their needs are, and figure out if that's something we wanna push with the school committee, right? Is it an urgent need? What sort of level of that? Is it a want? Is it a need? So this gets us through sort of where we are now, and this lays out the whole year. I don't wanna go through item by item, but this follows, and I think what's been done in the past, what I've seen from budget documents, this is pretty consistent with what's been done in the past. It's also consistent with my practices. This is sort of what I've always done. I've done a similar budget document, schedule document places. And everything on here is in roughly chronological order. So if something's number one in a month, that's the first thing that gets done. Number two is the second thing. I don't have specific dates because that can vary, and we sometimes need to be a little flexible with what's going on in the schools, things like that. So, but all of these things will get done in the month that they're scheduled for.
Questions on this, Al? I'm at the same time creating a similar document for the next superintendent as well too, each month, it needs to happen. Incorporating a lot of this, incorporating evaluation, incorporating everything that needs to take place month by month, so they'll have a sort of timeline for it as well too. And Department of Education provides one as well too. We'll have that presented to you at another time as well. Any questions for Aaron on the budget part of the first item on the agenda?
Happy to take feedback to the same thing. Just let me know.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
So next, I know that Megan did some introductions of Renee, our curriculum director, John, our elementary curriculum director, and Joey, our math coach. What I'm gonna be presenting to school committee later on this year is looking to do, and I know you're not gonna appreciate this, is to have another subcommittee meeting. We really need a curriculum subcommittee, right? Really do, to be looking at the curriculum, to really be making decisions for both, not only in math, but also coming up in ELA and a lot of other things that we're talking about. Most districts have a curriculum subcommittee meeting. We do not. But this is important, curriculum decisions that we're making. When we talk about the roles and responsibilities of school committee, the hiring of our superintendent, policy, and budget, one of the major things is when you're making a change in curriculum across the entire district, that is where school committees get involved, and in particular budget. So I know John and Joey have been working with a group this past year, and they're gonna go through all this. We need to get this in front of school committee. I thought the most appropriate way is get it in front of budgets up first, because we don't have a curriculum sub, so you can ask the questions you want. So this way, we're prepared as well. I know they have been preparing for quite a while. I want them to go through that timeline for you. So we go in front of full school committee, and that might be in October, but if not in October, certainly in November, so that we can make some final decisions, both curriculum hours, school committee approval, budget approval. So this way, they can move forward and start receiving and getting the information and getting the professional ring that will go along with that new math curriculum we're looking at. Okay? So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Joey, John, and Renee.
Just real quick, I wanted to acknowledge all that that Joey down there, seeing was, is that our math star did a ton of work organizing, getting the committee set up, to refer briefly to him. The issue with math at the elementary, not math, but subject, but math program, is it not like in the olden days, like when I was young? We don't buy books anymore, that, you know, if you're short on money, you can just keep using the same book year after year. Every year they send us consumables. You sign a contract, it's last moments for five years, and every year you tell them, I need this money in first grade, this money in second grade, and they send you those consumables. That contract unfortunately runs out, and that's what's happened for us. This is, we're in our last year with our current provider. So last year, Mr. Florway pulled together a bunch of people, and he's gonna end up the process.
All right. So that's right, this is the end of our fifth year. It's actually the end of our second five-year cycle with this particular company. So 10 years, so the year before, we sort of knew this was coming. We knew that we needed to get this started. And for me, I really wanted to start it almost at the end, because more important than the program that we have, the new program that we want, somebody writes a new book, whatever, more important than that is the teacher buy-in, and then after that, the administration support, the coach support of that program being implemented. So the very first thing I wanted to do, having been a teacher for so many years, is make sure that those teachers knew that they were a part of that step from the beginning. So we started this mid-last year with some of the professional development that I ran. And one of the sessions that I ran was specifically about, it was both elementary schools together. What are you looking for in a program? What is the, you know, the most important thing? What's the thing you can do without? What do you value in a program? So we spent an afternoon doing our parking lot, where we all wrote notes and put it up on different things. And then we gathered it up, and we came to the rubric, which is the, turns out to be, it's the last, on the last page, it says the scoring guide rankings. When, at the end of the day, that's what the teachers decided, those were the most important things to them, the differentiation, the assessments, instructional design pacing resources, and then other materials. So we took all of that, we put out a blanket invitation to everybody that wanted to join the school, this math committee. Come join us, we could use anybody that wants to be a part of it. So we sent that across to both schools and special ed and our tutors, anybody that wanted to be a part of this. So we had an idea of, this is what our teachers as a whole say is important, who would like to be a part of this committee. So we got a good group of students together, two students, a good group of teachers together. We had kindergarten was represented, second grade was represented, third grade, fifth grade, the special ed director was there, special ed teacher was there, our Title I tutor was there. So we had a couple of administrators there. So we had a good group of people. We took that list of priorities that the teachers had given us and said, "Alright, let's go ahead and make a scoring rubric of this." And that's what that last one is, is how we looked at each one. So we were going to use that to say, alright, here are all the programs available to us. Let's score it based on what these teachers want. And then you'll see through the notes, these are the Cliff, sort of the Cliff Notes versions I have. So once we had that in place, we knew how we wanted to score. First step with picking any math curriculum, even the one we have, it has to be approved through the state. And they have a website, Curie is the name of the website. And in order to get certain grants, and certainly we want to always keep our doors open, it has to be something that's approved by the state. State's only approved two math programs, so those immediately went on our list. And then they additionally say anything that scores in the three modules on Ed Reports, which is sort of a well-established review committee. They look at curriculums for all the subjects. So we looked, we took those two, then we looked at the Ed Reports and we found anything that scored in that high rank. And then we did one more step. We looked at the program we currently have. And anything that even though may have met those modules, if it scored below what we already had, we got rid of that as well. So at the end of the day, we started with any number, I don't even remember 20-something different programs. By the time we streamed it down to, what are we even going to look at? We ended up with the 10 you see on that first page. So as a committee with this rubric in hand, we started looking at it and saying, alright, we know we have this program. We're only going to look at things that are better than what we have, right? We're not going to look at something that's, we can keep doing what we're doing. So we went through each of those and discussed, you know, how does this play in? We dropped some because we didn't feel that it met the same standard. We dropped some because there were gaps in materials which main teachers trying to supplement stuff. So we narrowed it down to the first four. And once we had those four, I'll look at my notes, make sure I don't make it miss anything. Once we had those four, that's when we wanted to dig in. So we narrowed it down to the four, including the program that we, not the updated version. So the program we have is based on a 2020 program. There's a 2024. We obviously, we're going to, that was our baseline. The 2024 program was our baseline. We have three more programs to look at and sort of judge against that. Do we want to change it? Do we want to stay with what we already know? So we reached out to those companies, got their digital platforms, we got their manipulative, no manipulative, but their materials, whatever they would send us. And so the next meeting, and this committee we met, I would say probably eight times to look at the notes, but they met after school voluntarily and we went through each of these. So each week that we met, each time that we met, we would go through this material and we'd sit in the room together, we'd go through the online materials, we'd go through all this stuff. In case I forgot, kindergarten was a part of this too. Because when you're looking at materials for math, kindergarten to fifth grade, if you want all those teachers on board, you need to make sure that that material is something that they all feel comfortable they could use. So we did kindergarten there as well. So we looked at each one, we sat there, we're trying to find, what does this do? What does that do? What does this do? And we did that each meeting for all of the four programs. When it came down to the end, we ended up dropping a couple of them. We looked at HMH for a while. It was in the final four. It had, some of the issues by their own admittance was the worriedness, the confusion of some of the layouts. So we're, well, again, if it's not better than what we already have, we're not going to change. We might as well keep doing what we're doing. So we narrowed it down to a couple, I Ready and the one that we currently have. And the thing that really sort of drove it home for us was that this new program, and I'll step aside, but the new program that we're recommending, the I Ready, is, it's a different way than what we're doing. We've been doing the same program and one of the teachers had said, "We can't keep doing the same program and we'll probably keep getting the same results. We're still using the same thing, getting the same results." The thing that we liked about this is that it really approached it in a way that I think our students probably learn now than they did 10 or 20 years ago when we started with the SAVIS program. The way it's presented looks a little bit different. It really shifts the conversation from that sort of stereotypical teacher-driven, "I'm going to talk for this many minutes and then you're going to do stuff." It really put emphasis on the student discourse, which is something we, without this program, we've been working on for a number of years anyway, getting the students to talk, getting the students to be a part of it. This program really kind of shifted that, that way. The other thing I think it really helped was for us in the elementary setting, this is different than the middle school, high school setting. For the elementary setting, our teachers are covering all the subjects. So most of our teachers are not coming too elementary to become math teachers. They're coming there because they like children. And a lot of times it's around reading. If we looked at a lot of their background, it's in reading. This program is more clear for those who don't come with that math background. It's a little bit more streamlined in that way. So I think it's, you know, when teachers coming out of teaching programs right now, they're required to take one very basic math course. They're not required to do any upper level, middle school math, high school math. So when you, those people, you know, middle school, high school, look at this math, they see the way it should be streamlined. But if you're sort of at that level, you don't necessarily see, alright, some of the things we might be teaching, the way we might be teaching, may not be beneficial for the future, right? There might be something, we just said this at a meeting we had Monday. It's harder to teach a child than it is to teach a child. So some of the things that we're doing, for the reason we're doing it there is because we want them to know this first grade material, we want them to know this third grade material. One of the things that I do as a coach, when we're in the classroom, is try and say, well, when they get to sixth grade, right, when they get to fifth grade, they're not going to add a zero. They're going to be, we're talking about decimal numbers anymore at this point. So we talked about ways that we can make that language clearer and the process and the algorithms we use clearer once they get to the middle school. So we decided this is the one we like. We wanted to see if we could put this forward. So then our next step was we took it to the middle school and the high schools. Not because we need.
Please excuse the interruption. We have a number of announcements today and I'd like to make sure we get a chance to put them on air. The first is that the class of 2028 is doing a lunch for two, delivered to you as a fundraiser. We invite you all to help raise money for our sophomore class by purchasing a ticket for a chance to win lunch for you and a friend, delivered to you from your favorite local restaurant. The meal has $100 gift value. Tickets are being sold at all lunches from September 29th to October 30th. The winning ticket will be drawn on October 31st. You can purchase one ticket for $3, two for $5, or five for $10. And attention to Honto, the Powder Pop Football game is just around the corner. Saturday, October 11th at the Pop Warner Field from 4 to 8 p.m. The freshmen, sophomores, juniors and senior girls will face off in an epic football tournament while the guys cheer them on from the sidelines. Be sure to come, enjoy the games with us. If you are interested in playing, sign up. Sheets are posted on the senior bulletin board of the art room. The cost is $10 per player. And attention students, all of you who are taking the PSATs, please check your email to see what Ms. Katie sent about prepping for the PSATs. Come to guidance to get your blue book sign-in ticket this week. And there is a first chess club meeting tomorrow during first lunch from 10:56 to 11:26 in room 124. So if you could please wait for the bell before leaving, that would be much appreciated. Have a great afternoon.
Somebody should be recording.
Okay, I will try to wrap it up because it met me before, you know, I get into math, I can talk for too long. So I'll try. So anyway, so we took, we were looking at and we took it to the middle school and high school and met with them on, gave them a chance to preview and then I went and met with them on Monday after school. I got some of their feedback and by all means, it was very positive. They liked, it looked more in line with the curriculum that they're using. So they liked that. They liked that it looked more streamlined to what they were doing. They also liked that sort of approach of putting some of the practice into the student's hands and sort of removing that teacher from the center of running everything. And Francine sent us a number of notches. It was very detailed. So she sent me a whole list of really great ideas, but some of the ideas like using manipulatives at older grades is something that's incorporated in this program, but not necessarily in SAVIS. So it was again, modeling stuff that they're hoping to see when the kids get to sixth grade. So with that, we said, alright, we like it. You seem to like it. It seems like it's going to streamline us. We felt overall that it was a step above what we've been doing. We've been doing the same program for 10 years. I think it's more, it's more in line with the way students learn, the environment of them. Teach and the teachers, you know, I'm getting older, they're getting younger, I haven't decided. But they're, you know, so it's just a different approach and I think the math is clearer and clearer in that.
Joe, just for the record, can you tell us the program that we've been using for the last 10 years? Just sorry everyone knows.
It's called SAVIS. It is a Pearson product. It used to be called SAVIS 2.0. And then it was called SAVIS Common Core for a while. I think it's now called SAVIS 2020. Because that was the last version.
And the program you're recommending, right?
I Ready.
What's that?
I Ready.
Good. I just want to make sure I went through that because I don't know if we.
One of the other things that they liked was the, for us, the assessment piece because you don't, you don't know where the kids are if you can't assess along the way. And one of the things they use is, I kind of forget the name. They have their brand name or whatever. What's it called?
Alex.
Alex. And so what it does is it sort of gives a teacher, it always reminds me of, if you're in older days, the old reading programs where you had all the different colored cards that you could go through and each kid was at a different level. But it really helps to let the teacher know where each student is at that moment in time. It's a much smaller, quicker assessment than like maps or something like that. So they really liked that tied into the program itself. And it also seems to streamline better with the one that they're using at the middle school level. So the teachers get a better picture a little quicker of what each student is doing in front of them and they can adjust and adapt from there. So their feedback was positive.
So this is just one piece of the math curriculum we need to be looking at? We know there's some holes in our curriculum. So what we're recommending, what this committee is recommending to go in front of school committee, the cost, Joe, I think is important that you lay that out. I know that's in their paperwork. But this is just one piece of the curriculum, right? It's a program. Let's be very clear, right? There's other work that needs to be done. We need to do some curriculum writing. We need to do some work at the elementary level right now. So we don't have scope and sequences lined up so that everyone knows exactly when you're teaching it per grade, right? With that, we know that if I'm teaching all this in third grade, fourth grade's picking up that baton and moving it on as they move forward. All of that still needs to be done. But one piece that we really need to do is to have a math series, a math program, a math, but it's not our curriculum. It's just a program. And so with SAVIS coming to an end, it was either revisit and continue with SAVIS or move forward this I Ready. So at this point, we're just bringing it to school committee and say, listen, this is what we're thinking. This is what we'd like, we're recommending from our teachers. It's roughly going to cost over three years.
So for SAVIS, if we stayed with SAVIS for three years, it was going to be $76,000. So that's what just the normal.
Continuation.
For the new.
Per year or total?
For three years.
That's total for three years?
Total for three years. The new program that we're recommending is coming in at just under $93,000. So it's about $5,000 more a year.
Part of that quote, I think, included some additional extras though too that were kind of.
Oh, that's, right.
Still negotiating.
Still in the negotiation phase. That's sort of the upper end. There's some other pieces in there. There's some manipulatives we think we might be able to source differently. There's some trainings in there that we think we might be able to get a better price for. So that's sort of the upper end.
Mark, we've said multiple times, we're the customer here, right? So we're telling them what we want, right? We want some additional professional money. We want some additional manipulatives at a low cost. We're the customer. So that's what Joey and John are doing now with the help of Renee, like getting some additional information. But again, since we don't have a curriculum sub, I felt like I need to get in front of some subcommittee, right, before I got in front of full school committee. I felt the most appropriate one right now was budget, right, financial piece. And then ask us the questions so that we can be prepared to get ready to present this in front of school committee, either October or November, so that we can move forward in that direction here as well.
If I could just add one other note is that this kind of proposal that I've put together so far is for a three-year contract. The contract we're in right now with the middle high school, the middle school program of Reveal, they took a five-year contract, but they're in year two. So if we took the three-year, right, and then we're in this five-year contract, they actually would line up in three years, right? So that's just a good note, right? That was a good finding in our work together.
I appreciate Megan, the things that you sent me, right? From when you proved in the past the curriculum, the math program for middle school, when you're saying.
Yeah.
So that's why.
Yeah, two years ago.
Those were great conversations that Joey and John and Renee had with Francine, right? Department head of math, Francine, right? Yes. And had those conversations with them and met with them to discuss this as well too. So I appreciate you sending me all that stuff as well too.
And I think, and just one other piece if I might, we had a really great professional learning day on Friday where all three buildings were together for quite a good amount of time. And then in the afternoon, they had department meetings here at the middle high school. And some of that department meeting time was actually, we were able to get some samples of this curriculum and they were actually, go get their hands on it up in the math department and look through. And one of their comments, as I'm looking through, was they liked that collaboration in-house and they want to do more of it. They want to be able to get to the elementary schools. They want the elementary teachers to come back up here. Things that we've been talking about loosely, but now especially when it comes, you know, in paper, right? They're like, hey, we want to be able to see what this looks like so that we can develop that common curriculum, you know, that common thread of vocabulary we've been talking about. So, you know, I think this is, do we wish that some of those conversations had happened?
Hello, hello. If Brady May is in the building, can you come to the front doors? If Brady May is in the building, come to the front doors. Thank you.
Do we wish some of those conversations that had happened before? Yeah, but at least they're happening now, right, and they're moving forward. So I felt, I think we all felt really good about that. And I felt really good about seeing that feedback too from the middle high school. Like, hey, this is great. Thank you for including us in these conversations.
Friday was a great day, right? So I'm going to push a little curriculum and budget as well. It was great. All of us working, like filtering throughout the room, having conversations. The collaboration between our elementary, middle and high schools, sharing all practices that they did. And all of us engaging with that as well too. It was pretty powerful. I wish we had that recorded to just see some of those conversations that were happening amongst all of our teachers. Not, again, our mission this year is we are a school district, not a district of schools. And we're really working together on that Friday. So it was great to have that professional mind together. And then we all had lunch together as well too, which was really great. It was all sitting, having lunch. It was great. Questions for Joey, John, Renee, myself, Aaron?
Questions on the math and the process here.
I have a middle school student, so, and he had a great math education at the elementary level. It is very different.
Christopher Lewis to the office, please. Christopher Lewis to the office.
And the goal is to get on the same page three years from now. It wasn't better or worse. It was just very different. And I appreciate all the effort and collaboration.
The poor kid, right? He's going from Brooklyn, going from Boston, right? A poor student, being taught one way in elementary school and then he's coming to middle school and they're still doing it right. Our teacher's doing a great job in middle school, but they're teaching in a completely different way than.
Both great, but it's just not the same. Exactly. A lot of the kids.
All of that disconnect.
They're in Calgary.
Right. So pitching the poor kid sitting in that classroom, what, what's going on?
And some kids thrive off of it. And, oh, this makes sense to me so much more than it did at elementary school. And some kids are like, oh, I was so smart before and now I'm struggling.
So that's the work that they've done and we've been doing. And, you know, I'm still learning, so I didn't even know there was a new math curriculum brought for the middle school to, you know, like, I didn't know that, right?
I just remember, and so here's one tidbit from that that I do remember. Renee, I can't remember if you were here for that. I know not in this capacity, but I remember that, Lisa, you were definitely here. So they, the school committee was not, there was no presentation like this to a subcommittee or to the school committee. It came in, it was something that needed to be done quickly. And so there wasn't adequate time for the committee to review the curriculum. And I think just, you know, we're talking about having a curriculum subcommittee. I think that's great. But I think if we are going to be voting on curriculum, it would be great if we could review the materials. And we can't just do it the weekend before a meeting. So if we're going to do this in October, like, we need a week where we can go up to central office and the materials are there, like a book or something, you know, whatever's the samples that your committee looked at. Yeah, if we could look at that, and again, I can't, like, the weekend before, it's like, right? It's just too hard to cram.
We're not doing it.
There's one way we could do it, a quality way.
Yeah, and it's just like you're not focused on that because you already have plans. So if we can't do, I don't know what the timeline is. That would be another question I have. So anyways, you wanted to say something, Joe?
Oh, no, I was going to say, I have four or five sets of curriculum from them, which includes the teacher book, the student book, any of the extra materials to look at. If you just tell me where, like, a couple of places you'd like me to put them, I'll make sure they get this so that anybody can.
Joe, I think that's great. I also was thinking before, maybe the next couple of school committee meetings, both in October and November, maybe that half hour before, we have it all set up. People can come in, take a look at it as well too. There's a lot of online stuff as well too that we could share with them. We, this is, you are our first, first round, right? There's a lot more we're doing, but it's already October 1st, so we want to make sure that we're getting this to you guys.
Well, Meredith Ivory, please come to the office. Meredith Ivory.
So we got a ways to go. You're our first round. So we're just slowly bringing this to you guys, one step at a time and seeing, like, that feedback is important. That feedback's important. What else do we need before we get this in front of the full school committee?
Yeah, because I remember we almost didn't vote at that meeting for the middle school curriculum. I don't know. We almost didn't vote in favor of it because nobody had a chance to, you might remember that meeting. Yeah, and Carol was like, please, we need, like, it.
Yeah, and Carol was like, please, we need, like it expired or whatever the situation was. It wasn't like, there was no bad intent by anybody. It was just the way things happened. So I love that you've taken all this time to do this. I love that you're like ahead of the game. I'm assuming we have through the end of this current school year. So, yeah, obviously you want to make decisions soon. My only thing is like if we could have a week, and if you said you have four or five, people can take turns like bringing it home so you can actually sit there and look at it, you know, and then it's my night, all right, I'll pass it to Lisa, I'll pass it to Battle.
I'll find you so that's easy.
Yes, I see, I can start, I'll start and I'll get it from Joey.
It comes in like a pretty box. I'm going to take it out of that and just put it in a bag so it's a lot easier to carry. So I'll just have a bag for each of the grades and I'll give you one. And if you tell me where you'd like me to put another one, I'll gladly drop it off wherever you like. Currently, they're just housed in Boylston, just because that's where I have the space. But I can get it to Berlin, I can get it to Central, whatever is best for you.
And I see, I'll, we have a meeting tonight, but our meeting again on October 14th, so we can. So I can grab stuff too and then text you guys and give them, whatever.
The next, we, we got to get this still.
Meredith Ivory, if you're in the building, your ride is here at the front of the building. Can you please come to the front of the building, Meredith Ivory?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, I should have, I was going to say.
About the material.
We got to get this in front of teachers as well too. We got, we, we have this teacher core group that we're on. We've got a lot of other teachers we got to get this better through. But we also want to make sure that you guys are looking like saying, this is okay, these are small things. We got to make sure financially you guys are going to say, yes, we're okay with you taking this amount of money to do this. And then we got to start all this other process. We don't want to do it the other way, saying, get in front of teachers. Everyone says, okay, and then we bring it in front of you guys and you're like, no, we, we, we don't want to do that this year. We can't afford that this year and so on. So that's why we're bringing it to you guys first to make sure before we start going even further. Does that make sense?
Yeah, cost seems reasonable if we're getting more of a benefit. And Joey, you guys are the pros, so I mean, if we're getting more of a benefit, it's not, to me, this doesn't seem like a crazy jump.
I thought it was going to be much worse.
Yeah, I thought too, so too.
Should have seen some of the other quotes.
You could have.
I ready.
What was the range?
Probably the highest of all the ones we got, probably the highest was 180 something thousand. But that's, you get all the bells and whistles and it covered, you know, mid, you know, five years and covered six, seven and eight. So there were definitely some finagling along the way, so.
We're still negotiating, but I ready is one of the ones that's highly recommended by the department education, right? They vetted it. So as much as these guys have vetted it, they've done the vetting and now it's went over. It's pretty much used around a lot of districts around us as well too.
Can I just say something? So my kids come home with math homework every night. I thought it's Envision.
That's the, that's the.
That's the current.
Yeah, so Sabas is like the publisher and Envision is, is kind of the.
Pearson Sabas Envision.
So this Envisions on here are different than the Envision that the kids have?
No, that is ours.
Oh, that's the Sabas, okay, all right, all right.
Let's be clear, Pearson owns it all, right? That's all that is Pearson.
Pearson has owned it, but it's, it's Pearson owns Sabas and Sabas creates Envision.
They have like different subsets of kind of the curriculum that they go up.
By the way, Pearson's MCAS too as well, right? You know, that's what creates the MCAS as well. So the other part about this is we're making sure this curriculum lines up, this program lines up to the curriculum that we're doing, right? A lot of these publishing companies come from Texas, right? They line it up perfectly with Texas's curriculum. Chapter one is what should be happening at the beginning, chapter two should be happening down the line. So we're really making sure this is a good fit to the curriculum that we have in the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah, so if you want a vote in October, I'd say, you know, if someone wants to send an email next week, you know, for next week, if, you know, I hate to give Jen another test, but.
Maybe it's not October, maybe it's, maybe later. I don't, do we, are we crunched for that October?
I think it was really, you know, and Erica spoke to this, making sure we get it into the budget, right? So that's where we're looking at the timeline of October, November meetings to just know what needs to be, how much conversation, right? Might need to happen prior to that, what that conversation is going to look like at the meeting. You know, right, that sometimes there's so much conversation that the vote doesn't end up happening that day, right? I, you know, just not sure of what that's going to look like for the school committee. You guys can know maybe more after today's meeting, going back.
The other consideration financially is, you know, it's 90, whatever Joey said. As a chunk in $90,000, well, it's better than you would have thought. It's a chunk of the budget. And if school committee decides you'd rather break it up into annual payments, it'll be more each year, but it's an option you want to consider. I don't know that'll come from here.
And there's two things we're asking for, Renee, great point. We're looking to say financially, do you think we're okay with this? And looking that, yep, this is going to be a priority for you guys as a budget item, right? Can we afford it? But then also narrowing that down and finalizing, looking at the programs, looking at that. We just want to make sure that you guys know, we're looking about 100 grand we need in the budget somewhere. We don't want to surprise you when December or January saying, by the way, do you have $100,000? Because we have to get a new math program. We're just trying to be as proactive as we can.
Regardless, it's expiring and something is going to have to be purchased in that neighborhood of cost.
That's correct.
But you had the 76 in three years ago, so right now it wasn't in there the last year. So you're, I get what you're saying. You're adding in, he didn't, there wasn't in last year. So we have to add in the 100 this year because we didn't have the 76 two years ago or three, whatever, right? As a, yeah.
Okay, I get it. It'd give you a much better deal if you pay upfront.
You pay upfront, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it is also an option. And again, when we have, we've been in contact with the sales, you know, personnel to meet with us again to ask those additional questions, to give you that feedback.
We're squeezing this in the budget, right? We really should be vetting this to a curriculum sub, right? And then come to you as a budget, say, here's the program we're getting. By the way, we need $100,000 budgetarily, but we're sort of blending it too because we didn't know where else to, to push this. Or I didn't know where else to get this into a subcommittee meeting before it goes to a full school committee.
Yeah, I think.
We want this feedback from you guys.
You have to have a week where we can look at the material. So I'm happy to grab the material from Joey, you know, Monday or something and then pass it. I have it on Monday or if you have two copies, then two, you know, or we don't all have to look at every grade. Maybe we each look at a grade.
So how about if we wait, if that's okay, until October 14th? We do a sort of just quick synopsis of this and we say that exact statement. So everyone at school committee at the same times here and come get their program. So Megan's not getting on Tuesday and Jessica, I mean, this name's up. Jessica says, why didn't I know about getting this? So we'll get that all information on October 14th. We'll have the books and bags and everything ready and then we'll be able to deliver the same message to everyone at the same time. Does that work for you guys?
Yeah, that's perfect. And we can each take a piece of it. We don't all have to look at all of it, but I think if everyone's looking at a piece of it and then we can have some meaningful conversation in November. But yeah, I think just having the time for us to be able to look at the material, because it's really hard. I trust what you guys are saying, but it's really hard to, you know, vote on that without looking at it.
Perfect. That's why we're bringing it to you guys first.
The cost seems reasonable.
I will leave one of them in the box then so that on October 14th, you'll be able to see. We can go through the materials a little on, on the hands on it at that moment, show you everything that's there so that when you walk away with, you know, what I'm looking at.
Yep. And we'll give a much shorter version on October 14th. The agenda's getting long, but we'll just put it on your radar, right? Talk to the budget sub, during your section of budget sub, you can actually, you know, add more to it. And then we'll be able to say, by the way, here's some, some programs you could start taking a look at. Some bags you can start taking home with you as well too.
Yeah, and Aaron, obviously you're, you've looked at if it's cheaper to, obviously it's not going to be cheaper, but looked at the, if we do three years versus one, like, I don't know. I always like.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll certainly look at what, you know, getting into it. I think, you know, budgetarily, we're going to have to go through the school committee. I think we can, we would need school committee approval for anything over three years typically. So if we look at maybe a longer commitment, that might improve pricing a little bit. So that could be part of the negotiation. So if anything were to go, I think you mentioned a three-year was the sort of what they were looking at. But if there's a desire to look at something longer, a longer commitment, you know, that might help pricing a little bit. And, and we could then go to school committee. So we double request, we'd be requesting to do the five years as opposed to say three, but then we'd also be looking at more money, we'd be looking at the money. And I think this would fit into, as we're talking about use of things like school choice money, what have you, this is in that investment category, right? We're investing in the future of our kids. You know, we do, we should have conversations about how frequently we're going to refresh our curriculums because at some point, you're almost refreshing a curriculum every year, a few set cycles, right? And then it's not really a one-off investment, it's an annual expenditure. But at least for the time being, because we feel like we know we need it. And then we can start talking about strategy going forward.
Right now, we're, we're, we're feeling comfortable with the three years, I think, right? That's what we're looking at. We want to, we want to vet this ourselves, right? Right now, it's I ready, that's the, the end program that's right, that everyone's talking about right now. We did Way of Wisdom before in multiple districts I worked and that was the thing, right? Way of Wisdom, everyone did that for an ELA program. Everyone was jumping on Way of Wisdom. Guess what? Way of Wisdom is not being the most successful right now in districts. And now they've bought into multiple, multi-years on them. And now they're saying, okay, how do we, we move it to a different direction? So right now, I ready is the one that everyone's feeling is good, let us vet it. You know, whether three, four, how many years, and then decide whether this is something we want to invest and continue investing in. Again, please appreciate, they're all, all owned from Pearson, right? It's just one big umbrella, owns them all. It's just different. It's like TJ Maxx, Marshalls, C, all those different places I break off from, but they're all underneath one. This is Pearson, like they're all just one company, owns them all.
So it's like BlackRock and Vanguard?
Exactly, yeah.
They're the only ones that owns it.
All, I think Pearson owns that too.
Yeah, really. Again, they own the MCAs, right? They own that piece.
They own them all.
Okay.
Can I just ask you a question? When did you switch over from the old school way where you just had your book to like this kind of subscription program for curriculum?
Well, I've been around.
Kyra Krupfer.
Yeah. What'd you say?
I said, the book bags, Kyra Krupfer.
Oh, yeah.
Somewhere where you couldn't buy the CD-ROM for the program anymore, right? You can't buy video games anymore. You have to buy the subscription to it.
We still have hardcover in the high school, you know, for some of the algebra, some of the geometry, some of those pieces. But, you know, it does also then have, you can work together, right? Those consumable pieces are a little bit easier. But yeah, you can't just order, and it's, it's a moneymaker. At the end of the day, that's what.
It's all financial.
It's a money.
It's all, it's no different than we used to have just regular TV. Now we have Netflix, we have Apple TV, they just keep breaking. I couldn't watch the Red Sox game the other day, right? Because I had to, like seriously, like they just keep breaking it out, breaking it out into these different streams. And that's what they're doing with education program as well.
And is it better now? Like the kids learn better versus the.
It's different. My daughter does a lot, I think, of the math, online programs. It clicks for her. It makes sense for her. So there's definitely.
We're in an age of technology, right? So this is, and there's a little to be said, what Renee said, right? The backpacks and carrying all those books and, and the, you know, the books expire.
Meredith Ivory, if you're in the building, can you please come to the front of the building? Your ride is here.
I know we're being recorded, but like even US history, right? The, if you, if you think about the consumable of a US history or hardcover US history, it never gets beyond a certain point, right? And now at least with the technology piece of US history, they can update it as it goes along, right? So it's just ever changing.
That's very true. Just one other, we will definitely look to get that additional quote of additional years. But I do wonder, and I don't know the historical piece, if this is how we've gotten into this off-year piece where we just financially had said, you know, said, oh, middle, middle school, oh, get me that longer extension. I'm wondering if that's why we are off, right? There's a potential here to be back on track together. And whether we still agree on the same programs, it would be better, you know, quotes for us, you know, to be, to go through together. But I'm wondering if that's what happened somewhere along the line.
We got to catch up.
I like the three-year thing, like Renee said, so that we can be together. Because I don't have a kid at Tohato yet, but I have heard that it's very difficult to go from the elementary to the middle school. Because of, like you said, the differences, not, not that one's better, one's worse.
Both good teachings.
It's totally different. It's like night and day. And I think the more that we can do as this group of adults that's running the school to kind of like make that pathway easier. It's already hard just being a kid, being that age anyway. So I like the, the three-year thing and, and then trying to align that more. I wish we could do that with other curriculums too. I, I think that's a good.
ELA's next.
Yeah, I like that. So I, I didn't realize we did a five-year back when we did that again, like it wasn't explained as well.
And this is just like, we're uncovering some of these pieces and having these conversations, which, which is good.
And I think we're doing a better job and I think this credit goes to Ellen, to Renee, coordinating between the, you know, it used to be elementary was way over there. And especially the middle school is way over there. And we talked to anybody. You know, because when we get to that point, the curriculum, the materials are going to look different, right? You know, middle schoolers aren't going to love the cute robots and bunnies that go with elementary stuff. But the scope and the sequence would be better online if we can get it all done at one time. I'm guessing the price might be a little bit higher.
Yeah.
It's the right thing.
It is the right thing, that's right. Yep. All right, I like this.
Thank you, thank you.
Very good. So we'll wait till the 14th, you'll bring materials and then we'll decide and then we'll plan to vote sometime in November.
Sure. I'll have to get better bags and my stocking shot bags.
Would you, would you like us to, from like my report as with curriculum, do you want me to put his notes and things like that in my October report so you can, the whole committee can view it? Would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll put some links in there in my report.
Whatever goes in that drive is public record.